Right. We have a quorum and it's a great day in Kershaw County, an all-American county. Glad to see you all here in beautiful springtime weather. If I had permission to do it, we'd be meeting outside instead of inside, but we'll proceed from here. We have a quorum. Ms. Mary is on her way back with a piece of paper for council to consider, but we are called to order with a quorum established. With that, I'll lead you in an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand? Well, as it says in the good book, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. With that, we pray. Come, Holy Spirit. Holy God, we acknowledge our total dependence on you and your greatness. Come and sweep through this room and give us your wisdom and your blessings so that we may make the decisions that bring glory to your name and satisfaction to our citizens who trust in us to do the right thing. All this we ask in the name of the great friend and master of men, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the first item, which is public comments. Mr. DeBeauz, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mary.
Trying to speak in an American accent.
Don't worry, I can do that. We have three people signed up for public comments. The first one is John Rice.
Mr. Rice. Semper Fi.
I'd like to thank you guys for allowing me this opportunity once again to speak. I got a couple of issues I want to discuss. One is the container issue. Ever since this ordinance has come out, it seems to me there's been more problems than answers. Each meeting you guys have different, more questions than you do answers. My understanding, it was put out in 2007. And what about people who had their containers prior? Is there going to be something for them who had a container prior? How's this going to work out if a resident says they have one? How would they show proof? Myself along with others believe that this needs to be taken off the agenda until a better clarification can be brought upon it. Looking at the goals that you guys took on your Saturday to look at and just, I guess, questions, I don't, maybe I'm not as smart as some of you guys, but I don't understand how resource officers and school safeties weren't a top priority to begin with. I know you guys moved it up. You voted last week to move it up. I mean, to me, school safety is a top priority and it should have been a top priority. The county vehicle replacement program is a high priority. It's under my assumption that that's already in place with each department's budget. It seems to me that when this is done, it's a check mark for you guys and you can say, woo-hoo, we got a, we got one of our priorities completed, you know? It's like a sleight of hand motion on there. And again, like I said, I might not, I don't understand how all this works and you guys are maybe a little more knowledgeable than me, but what I don't understand is, you know, you're talking about the ball fields and doing some things at KC West, starting a new projects at KC West. I believe it was lighting or something, but why, when are the other projects that have been going on with the recreation department, when are those the projects going to be completed? I mean, like you've got 10 open projects, you need to complete some before you start more. If you run out of money, you're going to have 15 open projects and not enough to do. And the, it was on the low priority, but the transition to a new tourism and visitor center support model. I don't understand why you guys are doing that and the city back in December announced a partnership with Central Carolina on using $5 million in funds that they got granted by the state to help in expansion for a visitor center. I don't understand, if they got it going on and you guys want to do it, why can't you guys get together to begin with and do it and not have the city wanting to do one thing, you guys do another thing? If it's for the whole county, y'all should get together and do it, not have the city getting $5 million and then you guys coming in with a different version. And I've spoke before and I hate to mention names of any councilman, but tonight I want to mention a councilman and hope that he doesn't get offended by this, but it's Mr. Tom Gardner. Last week-
Mr. Rice, we want to stay on the issues-
I'm on the issue, sir.
Thank you.
This is an issue.
But you just raised the name of a councilman, so-
I apologize.
I want you to retract that and keep on moving.
I retract that. I would like to talk about a councilman-
Thank you.
-who made a comment last week and everybody knows it. It was the smartest thing that was said at the council meeting, last council meeting you guys had, and I believe that this councilman needs to be commended on that. The questioning of $46,000, I believe, was the amount on the arrow photography. And Mr. Councilman asked, since others used it evidently for their own profit, why can't they help pay some of the cost? I mean, we're looking, you're looking at cutting costs, you guys want to save money. Why do they get it for free? Why can't they use what the county paid for to finance their budget or to finance their stuff, you know? It needs to, it's a good point. And then last but not least, I want to read this letter that came out of Chronicle Independent. It has names in it, but it's public knowledge because it's in the Chronicle. Agree and to disagree, the old saying goes that politics is the art of compromise. Unfortunately, these days, especially on the national level, compromise doesn't appear to be a very common notion. On the local level, things tend to be a better with the members of each governing body able to find common ground to meet the needs of citizens in both Kershaw County municipalities and in unincorporated areas. That's not to say there aren't disagreements. On Tuesday, and as recounted on today's front page, Kershaw County Council found itself in two rather different situations. In one, collaboration worked well, at least for the time being, and another compromise didn't appear on the docket. It was gratifying to see Councilman Jimmy Jones and Sammy Tucker Jr., who have sparred often during their tenures, worked together to come up with a new version of the so-called shipping container ordinance. Their amendment, we believe, correctly suggested more work needs to be done on that ordinance, as I stated, and that passage of it as a stood at first reading would likely cause more problems than solutions. The rest of council thought so too, because it should randomly pass second reading with Jones and Tucker's changes. Then a short time later, Jones strenuously expressed his dissatisfaction with the goals and objectives his fellow councilmen came up with for fiscal year 2020 during a February 2 strategic planning retreat, calling them overly ambitious, overwhelming, and non-realistic. Other councilmen, especially Burns and Tucker, appeared to be upset by Jones' dissent. Jones may be right in his assessment. By the same token, the rest of the council may be on the right track with the goals and objectives they prioritized. Time will tell. In either case, we're certainly not suggesting council is made up of yes men and women. Sometimes though, we need to leave the arguments behind, agree to disagree, complete the task, and move on to the next one. Setting goals and priorities is important and we're glad council has done so. We're suggesting, however, that council members work even harder to reach consensus, not for consensus sake, but for the benefit of all Kershaw County citizens. We deserve no less.
Thank you. Semper Fi, John. Mr. DeBeauz?
Next person signed up is Jim Steele.
Tonight, I want to talk about the Clean Communities Commission. And the reason I'm talking to y'all is because when I went on the county's website and brought up the Clean Communities Commission, it listed all the members of that commission, but it gave no phone numbers or anything else, so I couldn't get in touch with them. So I'm bringing it up to y'all. I hope that the Clean Communities Commission is not going to turn into just another boondoggle where we waste a lot of money. The reason I'm bringing this up is in the newspaper, it talked about the Clean Communities Commission had just received 5,000 large tarps and tie downs and had distributed them to the local recycle centers to hand out to people with large trucks. That's a waste of money. I don't know where the money came from, but whoever gave it to them is wasting it. South Carolina law 56-5-4100 specifically states in there that all cargo that's transported, whether it's in an 18-wheeler, a car, a pickup, or whatever, has to have a cover to prevent their load from leaking, blowing out, and trashing up the highways. So why are we spending money on large trucks, which evidently are commercial, when they're required by law to have them? I think, I think some of the things that the commission wants to do is good, but I think they could have put that money to a better use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Mr. DeBeauz?
The third and last person to sign up for public comments is Tom Webb III.
Mr. Webb?
Well, I've got a little something to say about shipping containers. I wish you would just say hands off on that. The next thing that will happen perhaps is happening in other places, you'll tell us where we can park our pickup trucks, maybe not in the front yard, out in the boondocks in the county. My truck, my yard, I'll park it where I want, and I think the same should apply to any big metal box I might happen to have. So I wish you would leave that alone and I appreciate your struggling. The last session you had, it looked like y'all were really trying to resolve something. I appreciate that. Some of us who stand up and speak are being called obstructionists. It's, I guess it's meant to be a denigration, but I take it as sort of a pat on the back. Nobody, I mean like a human body or an animal body or a body politic will do very well unless there is something within it that obstructs it when it goes too far. And the human body, it's the immune system. Without an immune system, you would be in great trouble. You wouldn't survive. And so there is a place for obstructionism. One of the obstructionists that I appreciate, have appreciated very much was Antonin Scalia. He was referred to sometimes as an obstructionist because he stood in the way of people who wanted to just willy-nilly go off and pass this law, pass that law. And then he was a very strong constitutionalist. He obstructed some of this looseness that people seem to have to pass laws. But he died three years ago in February. I think February should be considered Scalia Month. Actually, he died on February 13th. That should be Scalia Day and Scalia Month. He went hunting down in West Texas and didn't come for breakfast. He was found dead with a pillow on his face, sleeping in his, where he had went to sleep in his bed, and didn't get an autopsy. So I have a poem that I will inflict on you once a year in February, or Scalia. Who Killed Justice Scalia? The judge who loved the Bill of Rights served us all from lofty heights in the highest court of law. He died in bed at peace, they said, but something's not quite right and the story has a flaw. On his hunting trip, they let it slip with a clue that's out of place. They found him dead at peace in bed with a pillow on his face. A pillow on his face? Yes, a pillow on his face. The assassin left a sign to celebrate his crime, Antonin Scalia, with a pillow on his face. It seemed so awfully strange to me, they never did an autopsy. It's another thing that's out of place and they just let it be. Then every judge who could expound on the cause of death was out of town. They all seemed kind of scared to check up on our fella, till someone found another judge whose name was Cinderella. Excuse me if I bellow, Cinderella, Cinderella. Our good judge was judged okay, and there's no good reason to think foul play. Cinderella, so you say. And yet, there was another trick. They embalmed him mighty quick, so the killer's on the loose and asking questions ain't much use, and it makes me kind of sick. There's no more right and wrong, no more black and white. There's a poison in the people and a reason to be cautious in the middle of the night. But still, we have the power of the magic and the music of poetic rhyme and verse to conjure up awareness to counter any curse. For Antonin Scalia, then, my words are fife and drum, an anthem for a mighty man in the country where I'm from. I'll play this drum and fife till my life is in the noose. No time to be too quiet now, there's a killer on the loose. So here's to you, old justice Ace Scalia, and years to come beyond the sky, I hope I'll get to see ya. I know I'll know that portly saint up in heaven's face by the oath he squares and the robe he wears and the pillow on his face. So something really bad happened to Scalia, it appears, and it looks like we're drifting into something like what happened in Central America, South America. Supreme Court justice for 34 years, looking out for our Constitution and Bill of Rights, died like that and didn't get an autopsy.
Now, thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. DeBeauz?
That concludes the public comments.
Thank you. Very good. That concludes public comments. We move now to a public hearing. A public hearing regards to an ordinance by Kershaw County to amend the Kershaw County Uniform Code of Zoning and Land Development, Section 325, to amend the regulation for regulations for accessory structures and uses. Opening a public hearing. And while we wait to see if anyone will come forward, I say to you that we're required to do this when we change such a regulation. And potentially, and very likely, we'll move into the third reading next week on what is known as the shipping container regulation, but it's broader than that. So we'll wait a moment, a respectful time, to see if anyone comes forward.
Action, Mr. Chairman. Three people signed up.
Very good. What'd you call them forward, Mr. DeBeauz?
The first one to sign up is Jim Steele.
Mr. Steele, please. Now, the rules are a little different here in which exchange is authorized and encouraged so we can learn and have, not debate, but at least exchange information. Mr. Steele, same rules apply with respect to the quorum, so I give you the floor, sir.
Thank you. I wanted to talk to you about this container ordinance. In this country, we have a very, what to the rest of the world is a very unique concept. We think that our rights are given to us by our Creator, by God, and that government was instituted by man to protect those rights, not to define them and not to grant them, but to protect them. And I just hope you'll keep that in mind as, as considered as container ordinance, which in my humble opinion is just another erosion of people's property rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Mr. DeBeauz?
The second person to sign up is Donna Pushak.
Say again the last name?
Pushak. P-U-S.
Oh, yes, of course. Thank you. Ma'am, we normally allow about 10 minutes. Please go ahead.
Oh, it won't take that long.
Okay.
This is, yeah, y'all know me. I've been here before. This time I came with a picture, so I had it missed out of the container that was next to my property. My neighbor threw it in there and let the grandchildren put graffiti all over it.
Just for the record, the clerk has passed this around to each of you. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Donna.
And as they say, a picture is a weapon. And God bless that in 216, when this first came up. And I was in a meeting, I was starting to attend, and I heard a gentleman from Cass speak and say that he was unsatisfied because he had to move his. And I was like, oh, I didn't even know there was an ordinance against that. So I looked into it, but I had to wait until all of you went through the whole process and you didn't change it, which was, I was so grateful. And so I then went through zoning and they contacted my neighbor and they had to move it because it definitely was a distraction. My property is kept up and it's not like I'm the pot calling it black in that my property's maintained and kept up and prestige condition. I am a widow. That's why it takes me a little more. There's three adults next door. It was grandchildren, though, that did the graffiti, but the grandparents allowed it. I just don't want this to continue on to where if you allow this container ordinance to change, you are taking away what little bit of privilege or rights that we have, authority, whatever you want to call it, to be able to say, wait a minute, your property does not, you need to do something. You need to clean out. Or it's not right. Yes, there are a lot of them in the area and I understand that. And I've been asked like, oh, there's one up the road on Somerina Road, you need to. I said, no, I don't. I took care of the one next to me. It's up to the people who have the property next to them. If they don't like it, they need to do something, not me. Okay? I took care of my property that was adjacent to me. God bless that you didn't change the ordinance and I hope you, if you do change it, do it in a manner of fashion that requires them to be maintained, look presentable. My only concern is, do you have the manpower to monitor? Because, you know, trailers are supposed to be underpanded. Well, after 20 years, if you drive through the countryside, there's a lot of them that aren't underpanded anymore and they don't look good. So with the Clean Community and like the gentleman said, I saw that article too, and I thought, well, gee, we're going in the right direction, but if we change this ordinance, we're kind of like stepping back. So that's my little thing. I just hope you take it into consideration.
Let me ask you, hold for a second. For fellow councilmen here, we would have brought forward a further third reading on that ordinance. Mr. Jones, Mr. Conell, and Mr. Snodgrass all had taskers for the administrator to pass on to the attorney, but unfortunately, the attorney was in Australia and his deputy was sick. And some people might count that as an advantage, but they were not available to work the staff action. So today, we decided to go ahead with the third reading since we had already announced we, I mean, not the third reading, the public hearing, with the idea that this would advance our understanding. So very likely, we'll have the third reading next time we meet. Anybody any questions for Donna? Okay.
I have one question.
Yeah, Mr. Conell.
On your picture.
Port of order. With this not allowed, is it, sir?
During public hearings.
Public hearing, not comments. From us?
Public hearing, yeah. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question. I wonder how your opinion would change, if at all, if the graffiti happened to be on the building instead of the shipping container?
I would have said something.
You want to bring the mic in close to Donna?
I would have said something.
Okay, so it-
It's not just the fact that it's the graffiti on the shipping container, honey. It's the fact that I found out that that container was not allowed there. Now, you know, if the graffiti was on the building, I would have gone to planning and zoning to find out what can I do. There's a situation around the corner from me that I hate to be the one to turn them in, but gosh knows, there's trash, they have it in containers, it's been there for two years, the wind is blowing, it's moving around. Matter of fact, when anybody comes to my house and I tell them, if you're using your GPS when you come down Tillman Road, please make the sharp left, because before that, your GPS is going to say you're arriving at your destination. I said, it's Sanford and Son. It is not my place. To get to my house, you have to go around that curve and then you'll see the open fields and you'll see the pastures with my horses. I said, you know, just, that's not my place. That place looks terrible. And I think the health department could come out and condemn it, but-
Well, ma'am, my, my thought was on the initial part of your response. All along, I felt like we have some laws on the books that kind of address these things, whether it's graffiti or otherwise. It's called common law nuisance doctrine. And if somebody feels like something's a nuisance adjacent to someone else's property, you actually bring an action for that and lay out why it's a nuisance, why it might reduce your property value. You have to prove your day in court, you put up a filing fee, and you know, if you prevail on the merits, wonderful. You actually typically get your fees back and, you know, you win. But I've always felt like we kind of have laws in place that would affect that particular issue.
Other comments, questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Gardner, please, sir.
Do you object to the shipping container or do you object to the shipping container with graffiti?
Well, is the graffiti on it for sure. The shipping container, when it first arrived, Mr. Gardner, was kind of funny. They have a little pavilion on this piece of property that the previous owner built for his travel trailer. And that's where the shipping container was placed, right out in the open. And unbeknownst, two days later, that little sucker got moved to behind the garage, which is where it's pictured now, because they didn't want to see it. Now, I don't think they're that attractive. I understand they have a usefulness because of how they lock and they're hard to get into for people to steal from. That's all well and good, but the majority of these people that are bringing these in, and like I said, I was really amazed that these people allowed the grandchildren to do this and make it look like it was, like it did. And I think the reason, they just kind of like, well, it's hidden behind a garage. Well, don't, don't live next to me. All I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Donna?
Other question?
Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass.
So would you say that your objection is not so much the container itself, but maybe the condition in which the property is kept? So let's say it was a container and it was, it maybe had a covering over it or is built, I mean, I mean-
Oh, if they had maybe, you know, when they painted those garages with that deep red color, like a sustain, if they would have incorporated that into that and made it blend, you know?
So you probably would have had an issue if they would have bought a stick-built shop and moved it there and still put graffiti on it?
I'd have had an issue with the graffiti on the stick building, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I have a, I have a problem with the cans flying around the yard when they don't get them to the thing and they fly over in my side and I'm going to tell you right now, I go through and I walk over and I give them a little boot and they go back on their side.
Do you mind leaving your contact information with the county attorney?
Oh, it's there.
Okay.
My address and my phone number.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mr. DeBeauz, who's next?
The third person to sign up for public hearing is Tom Webb III.
Mr. Webb, please, sir.
Isn't it great that there's such a variety of people? It'd be so, so boring if we're all just clones and all just alike. But sometimes, I guess, because we're different, we see things so different that we're going to picket each other a little bit. And I appreciate what Mr. Conell, Ben Conell, said about the law. There are things that you can do through legal proceedings that will contend with something that might be dangerous or harmful in your environment without passing regulations that inflict too much control over the rest of us who live somewhere where we have no problems like that. And as far as graffiti goes, you know, this eyes and the, the beauty is in the eye of the beholder. You've probably been into some art galleries somewhere and seen some modern art that you would think was just plain graffiti. Somebody's kid got hold of a, of a paintbrush, but it's very valuable, you know? Somebody would steal that and sell it for a million dollars. It's the beauty is in the eye of the beholder again. So this is the reason we have private property, so that I can have on mine what I want and you can have on yours what you want. And if you are the sort of person that just can't stand your neighbors or what they're doing, then perhaps you need to move to someplace where you got more room or should have bought more property to begin with, or you should have got into a homeowners association inside of a housing development where you sign a contract when you come in, you already have it resolved, what's going to be done. As for some of the people out in the county, there's some fantastic people who've worked in all kinds of different jobs, they've been in the military, as some of you, as I have. We're not children. We're not, we're not out here waiting for somebody to pass another regulation, regulation, law to tell us what we can and we can't do. We've, we've been to church, we've grown up, we've been to school, we've raised children. We're bona fide, grown-up human beings, and I just don't think we need more and more regulations all the time. We're drifting in a direction that our descendants will ask us, why did you let that happen? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Any questions? Anybody who want to put me in the hot seat? I just love it.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any further questions, any further commentary from those who want to testify? Seeing there is none, we'll close the public hearing and thank you, those of you who came. I appreciate it. Public hearing is closed. We move to an adoption of agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda? And there it is on the board.
Make a motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
If I may, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda, if I could, on item number three, where you see new business discussion slash approval of engineering and permitting for Central South Carolina mega site.
Yeah.
I'd like, my amendment is that no expenditure for engineering and permitting for the Central Carolina mega site be considered for approval unless the actual proposal and option is in the agenda packet and listed for consideration on the agenda.
Very good. Is there an exigent circumstance for you to change it?
I'm asking for, it's, I made a motion, Mr. Chairman, and there's no discuss-
As a chairman, I'm authorized to make a ruling that if there's any exigent circumstance, we can accept the motion. Is there an exigent-
Point of order. Mr. DeBeauz, I've made a motion to make an amendment and the chairman has interjected before we've had a second.
Well, just clarification, you, you want to remove that? That's what you want?
Correct. What I want to remove, I want to remove on, under number three, new business, I want to remove the approval, and I'm, Mr. DeBeauz, bear with me. You see that agenda there where it says E? You see where E is under new business, right below it, number three, discussion slash approval? We have no disclosure to the public. We have nothing in our agenda packet. What are we going to go and vote on?
So my question here is, is there an exigent, we'll just follow through the- We'll, just follow through the questions, there, Mr. Jones. Is there an exigent circumstance? And you, and I'm reading back now to make sure, I'm just trying to understand, I'm not trying to stop your process, but under our rules, there are two rules. To change the agenda, it has to be an exigent circumstance, and it has to have a two-thirds vote. So let's get to the first test and, and see if there's an exigent circumstance. As I understand it, it's your recommendation to remove it, but because there's no public record of this, and it was not in the agenda package, is that what you're saying?
Mr. Chairman, we have an item on the agenda that there's no disclosure, there's no information, and this council could be spending one to 1.2 million dollars on this issue, and it hasn't even been disclosed to the public. And, and I'm, I'm a little appalled by that, to be honest with you.
Well, there's, uh, I'll, I will take a moment to explain that these are contractual issues, and we're gonna go into executive session, as I explained to you before the meeting, and because of these contractual issues.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, you said we were gonna go into executive session, come out and take a vote, and I have nothing in my packet, there's been, the, the, this council deserves information on what we're gonna vote on. This community, these folks deserve information on what we're gonna vote on, and I just can't believe that, uh, we're having this discussion right now, to be honest with you.
Well, I, I think I've explained it to you, and it, but if, I am willing to, to put this to a vote, Mr. Jones, uh, because I think the discussion might help further make everybody understand there is no attempt to hide anything. Let's go, is there a second for Mr. Jones' motion to remove this from the agenda?
Mr. Jones, let me ask you one question.
No, is there a second? Or not? And then we'll get into discussion. So we have a second. Now, Mr. Jones, please, go ahead and lead us in discussion.
Let me say this, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Bozard, and thank you, members of the county council, for allowing me this moment. Bear with me. First off, I want to say that I am now and have been in favor of an option on the Megasite.
Let me, let me, uh-
Mr. Chairman, I've got the floor.
No, wait a minute, no, you don't. Let me make sure. I, I want to make sure our lawyer is listening, and here's the reason, everybody. Here's the reason, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be very firm about this. We have a contractual issue, two contractual issues, that we need to go in executive session on, on this topic, and any discussion of that needs to be guided by our attorney so as not to compromise what is very sensitive. And I assure you, everything will be known, but we are in a contractual issue right now.
Mr. Chairman.
So I asked, I asked the attorney, Mr. Jones, you don't have the gavel here.
Oh, I have the floor, sir.
I'm asking the attorney, can we proceed with this, and discussion of option and so on? Is that okay?
Motion, yeah, Mr. Chairman, you can call for a vote on the motion.
Right. Let's go ahead and call for a vote. Uh, with that, all those in favor of removing the item from the agenda-
We have a discussion first.
No, we're not. We're gonna do a vote. I'm calling a question.
Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely trying to shut me down. That is censorship, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, raise your hand. There's no one in favor, the motion dies. Now we'll move on to the next item.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
We move, Mr.?
What? Would you, point of order, would you clarify what he got wrong just now, please, Mr. DeBose?
Mr. Jones, you made a motion to amend the agenda.
Correct.
Um, to amend the agenda, add something to the agenda.
Or take it off.
To take it off.
Well, you've just been to take it off the motion, we've just been to delete it.
Well, that was, that's what I said.
But, the, the, well, amend, delete. I think we're parsing words. But, but just as the chairman said, if, I don't know how councils can vote, but he called for a vote. If council denies this, honestly, that's not the end of the story. If the motion gets on the floor, you can make a motion to amend it. He's just, as a preliminary ruling, saying that we're gonna leave it on the agenda, Mr. Jones, until we get to the agenda, then we can have an executive session, and then, honestly, your motion can be remade if this gets on the floor.
Exactly.
You can make, make the motion again. That's all the chairman's saying.
Exactly. Well, we took a vote for my motion to stay on the floor.
All the chairman's saying, as I understand it, all due respect, Mr. Jones, is that it's pretty mature at this time, because it's not an emergency, and when we get to the agenda, the chairman's ruling is that he wants to vote on it when we get to the agenda, he's, the chairman says you're going to executive session, council has to vote on that, but then when he comes out, the way I understand the chairman, he's not saying you can't renew your motion at that time.
Exactly correct. And so the time for discussion is executive session.
How did the vote go, Mr. Chairman?
I've made the ruling, and I'm gonna make the vote.
I understand, but I want to ask a question. I'm, I'm gonna ask this question, I won't continue all night.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, you asked how many opposed me making, having a discussion here tonight, and I didn't see a show of hands.
Well, that wasn't the motion.
Twenty-one. No, no, you, you asked, you asked.
No, the motion is on the floor to amend the agenda by deleting that item, and I have ruled that there's not an emergency to remove it, given that we have an executive session to follow. And secondly, we have a second, so we're at the point now, instead of discussing the issue, that we're at the point of, I call the question, and I now give you the option to vote. And with that, we, I call the question.
Mr. Chairman.
Satisfied on the point of order?
You, you called the option to vote and would not even let me present my position.
Correct, that is correct.
That is censorship, sir.
That is because of the contractual matter, and we'll talk-
Listen, I was gonna say, nothing that would've violated any contractual matter. Y'all had it put on the agenda to vote and approve. You've got no supporting documentation in this packet for us to come out and vote on. What you're gonna do is, you're gonna go into executive session, you'll come out, you're gonna take a vote, and you're gonna spend a million dollars.
Okay, well, that's it. We call the question. All those in favor, raise your hand. No one raised their hand?
All in favor, yes, sir.
All those, all those opposed to amending the agenda by deleting this item, raise your hand.
Opposed to?
All those opposed to Mr. Jones, am, am-
And letting me speak, Mr. Tucker, that's what you're opposing. Vote against me, but let me speak.
You'll get, you'll get an opportunity to. Um, you've raised this question to confuse me. All in favor to his motion is what we're voting on, all?
That's correct.
Okay.
So all those in favor of his motion, no one raised their hand, not even, not even the person who made the vote.
Mr. Chairman, because I'm not gonna agree with your process.
So then, all those in favor, opposed to that, to that amendment, raise your hand. And that's, uh, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Conell. The, the motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Thank you, members of council, for hiding this issue.
Mr. Jones, you will be respectful in here. There's not hiding because-
Mr. Chairman, I'm being very respectful.
Now, we move to the agenda. All those in favor of the agenda signify by raising your hand. Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Conell, all those opposed, and that's Mr. Jones. The motion carries, the agenda moves forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council.
We move now to approval of minutes at tab A, uh, from the 12th February meeting. Uh, can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr., was that Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any discussion? Uh, no discussion. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Thank you very much. The minutes are approved. Move now to our proclamation honoring Mrs. Ella Bell Hunter Boykin. Uh, I'll read it, and then we'll see if someone will help me by bringing it forward. Uh, Mrs. Ella Bell Hunter Boykin, whereas Mother Ella Bell Hunter Boykin was born March 1st, 1929, to the late Wyatt Hunter and Marie Hunter, and raised in Borden, South Carolina, educated at Rembert Memorial School in Rembert, South Carolina. Whereas Mother Boykin worked on her father's and mother's farm, after her father's death, she continued to work the farm, and she also helped her mother with the younger siblings. As a youth, she played basketball, half-court basketball, but this was not her favorite sport. Softball was her sport. Whereas Mother Boykin was a member of Mount Pisgah Missionary Baptist Church in Rembert, and after marrying the love of her life, the late Oziah Boykin Senior, she moved her membership to Union Missionary Baptist Church, Rembert, South Carolina. Whereas Mother Ella Bell and Oziah were blessed with four children, Barbara Anne, Oziah Leland, uh, now deceased, Juanita Harriet, and Ella Ophelia. The Boykins are very proud of their children. Mother Boykin is also blessed with nine grandchildren and 13 great-grandchildren. The grandchildren offer, refer to Grandma Ella Bell as super-grandma. She has great love for her family and everyone she's encountered. Others share a great love for her as well. She has a gift to make people laugh. Whereas a faithful and God-fearing Christian, Mother Boykin has served in several missionary organizations, at Union Missionary Baptist Church, to include usherboard, senior choir, and senior missionary. She served as treasurer of the senior missionary for two years, and named the mother of Union Missionary Baptist Church in 2014. Whereas Mother Boykin is passionate about doing her crossword puzzles and listening to gospel music. Some of her favorite gospel singers are Rance Allen, Luther Bonds, and Reverend F.C. Bonds, but her most favorite is Lee Williams. She also has all of Lee Williams' DVDs and often goes to bed at night only to have her Lee sing to her to sleep. Whereas Mother Boykin loves working outside, and especially working in her garden. She loves her animals, too. The exercise she gets from doing these things make her 90 years young and not 90 years old. Whereas nothing is more beautiful than a woman who is brave and strong and emboldened because Christ is in her. Mother Bell Hunter Boykin is a virtuous movement, woman, beautiful, brave, and bold, and embodied in Christ. Her price is far above rubies. Now therefore be it resolved, the Kershaw County Council recognizes and honors Mrs. Ella Bell Hunter Boykin, and wishes her happy 90th birthday. Can we have a motion, Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for this proclamation honoring Ms. Ella Bell Hunter Boykin.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Tucker. Any points?
I just want to say, um, you know, anybody who's been born in the 1920s and still alive and have, uh, helped raise or, um, been a nanny to many kids that have grown now in this community, rightfully so deserves, which the proclamation didn't even talk about that part of her life, a proclamation recognizing her, and I want to say, just for the record, too, that Sumter County is doing one as well. She lives in Kershaw, but she's right on the border. But she's been that, um, busy and, um, that caring of a lady to, uh, have friends and loved ones in both counties.
And as I understand it, Sheriff Lee Bone is a part of this?
Sheriff Lee Bone and Sheriff Anthony Dennis from Sumter County.
Very good, thank you. Uh, other discussion? Uh, seeing there is none, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, and, uh, we will certainly make sure you present that at her birthday party. We move now to the next item of resolutions, a resolution for ESGR, which is Employee Support of the Guard, Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve, ESGR. Uh, we have a request from the state level, uh, ESGR chairman to ask us to do this. I'll read it. A resolution for ESGR, whereas we fully recognize, honor, and enforce the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act, and whereas our managers and supervisors of Kershaw County have the tools they need to effectively manage employees who serve in the Guard and Reserve, and whereas we appreciate the values and leadership and unique skills of service members, active Guard and Reserve to bring to the workforce, and will encourage opportunities to hire guardsmen, reservists, and veterans, and whereas we will continually recognize and support our country's service members and their families in peace, crisis, and in war. Now therefore be it resolved, Kershaw County recognizes the contributions of our Guard and Reserve make to the community, and specifically our county. And with that, can we have a motion?
So made.
Thank you, Mr. Bar, Bozard is an old veteran, and a second by Mr. Tucker. Any comments?
Yes, sir.
Uh, since you, uh, go ahead, Mr. Bozard.
I agree with this wholeheartedly. I read an article this morning on, um, computer news about a company that has 875 employees, 710 of them are retired or veterans. There are companies out there that's looking after the veterans, and I sure appreciate it, because I spent 23 years there, and I enjoyed every minute of it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes, it's just one, um, correction in the, um, resolution, 2019.
Yep, we can fix that, thank you. Uh, other discussion? Uh, those of you employ people, I certainly do, uh, give special consideration to the fact that these Guard and Reserve go overseas sometimes as long as a year, and there is a law, but there's also a will on behalf of employers to make sure that employee, when he returns or she returns, and wears the uniform of our nation in combat or in forward-deployed, can get their job back and do not suffer any disadvantage. That's the whole idea, is we, Kershaw County, as we say in our goals and objective, are friendly to the military, and I appreciate this opportunity to have read that to you on behalf of the chairman and Columbia of the ESGR for our state. Other comments?
Ms. Chairman?
Yeah, yes, sir.
I just want to say, thank you for, um, going to battle and going to Columbia to fight, um, for this, because, um, I know there was other folks that they were trying to get into this pot, but I think these folks are more worthy and more deserving, um, of this, uh, resolution and, um, and support.
No, thank you. Other, other comments? With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, Mary, and we'll get that resolved and also fixed. Um, we move to new business. Uh, the first item on the new business is an ATAX Committee reappointment at tab D. Uh, Mr. Chip Galloway moves into, hey, how you doing? Uh, Mr. Chip Galloway moves into the annual cycle, um, and it's a very important one for the apportionment of ATAX monies. Uh, and he is due to, to be replaced and renewed. Uh, can we have a motion for Chip Galloway to be, uh, reappointed?
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Jones, thank you, a second?
Second.
Mr. Tucker, any discussion?
Mr., Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that, um, I appreciate my colleague's support on this, because, um, he has really driven this, uh, commission in the past years, and has the knowledge and, um, the expertise on, um, this commission, and, um, we, we need his, we need his help.
I see in the audience a, a previous member. Thank you, ma'am, for your service. Uh, we do have a vacancy that we need to fill, and I ask you all to help us fill that vacancy. Uh, when you get an opportunity to go about your business, try to find a person to fill that one other vacancy. The work of the ATAX Committee goes forward right away, so. With that, uh, no further discussion. Let's move to, uh, a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, Mary, and Chip Galloway is reappointed. With that, we move to the library board appointment. Uh, it's at tab E. Uh, we have one vacancy, and, uh, we have one applicant. Can we have a motion to approve, uh, Mrs. Huntington?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we, uh, appoint Marjorie Huntington to the library board.
Thank you, sir. We have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Tucker. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I spoke with, uh, Ms. Huntington, and, and, uh, just love her background in the arts, as well as an English teacher, uh, both here and abroad, and so, like, it'd be a great addition to our library board.
Very good. Uh, any other discussion? I will tell you that, uh, our librarian has won statewide, uh, recognition, and she runs, uh, library services in your town, mayor, and also up in Bethune, and, uh, on the truck, the mobile truck, um, opportunity. And secondly, I attended a service on, I think, Sunday on behalf of a deceased young man, a ten-years-old, Mr. Townes Redfern. And it brought home to me, and where they dedicated some books to Townes, who love books, how our libraries are more than just a place for books. They are a part of our community in very important ways, and I commend our librarian for being so forward-leaning. With that, we have the motion on the table. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous. Thank you, Mary. We move to the next item, which is Item 300 New Business. I propose here is no vote, that we take a discussion. As you heard earlier on, we don't have the package before you because there's contractual matters here. And the idea is to begin in a very controlled way, and then we're going to go into an executive session to make sure our county is up to speed on it at the councilman level. And then we'll decide in executive session if we come back out and vote. So I would start out by first saying that this is a very structured brief, it's very sensitive in the nature of what we're trying to put forward. It impacts two contracts. And as you've already heard, there's about a million dollars involved in this and more. And so we're taking it in a very deliberate way. And if necessary, we'll delay any vote going forward. But right now, we have a need to get the information before us. I would ask the attorney and find Economic Development Lead Peggy to make sure we don't wander into contractual matters. We have an obligation, and indeed, we are committed to keeping the public informed. And that process begins now. Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, just going to start by giving you a timeline of our economic development efforts with the bond issuance. Back in the fall of 2015, county council approved issuing a seventeen-million-dollar bond that was directed at improving and enhancing our product and our position regarding economic development. When the bond was issued, it named specific projects that were seen as being critical to achieve that goal, along with broad guidance allowing us to redirect those funds as circumstances warranted into new projects or endeavors as long as they pertain to economic development. County council authorized staff to proceed with the implementation of those projects in the fall of 2015. In February of 2016, the county issued an RFQ, a request for qualifications to all engineering firms that were interested in providing services for those projects. The RFQ requested those firms provide relevant facts regarding their experience in such projects, including specific examples of successful projects, cost-to-budget of those projects, references, and specific members of their organization that would be providing services and their backgrounds and experience. Eleven different firms responded to the request, and from those eleven, four were chosen as being qualified to do the projects that we envisioned. Those four were AECOM, Alliance Consulting Engineers, Michael Baker, and Thomason Hutton. To date, approximately three and a half million dollars has been expended on those projects, resulting in the clearing of land at Heritage Point Industrial Park and Governor's Hill Industrial Park, completion of the Heritage Point spec building and the Steeplechase Road extension. Studies have been completed on the Black River Road expansion project, and engineering and permitting is underway on the Governor's Hill Industrial Park entrance and the interior road. In January of this year, Kershaw County, along with the SC Power Team, Fairfield Electric, and the Committee of One Hundred sponsored an Economic Development Summit in Camden. At this summit, the county was advised to aggressively move forward on the marketability of the central SC mega site. This advice, parallel advice provided to us by the South Carolina Department of Commerce when they were asked what steps we should be taking in order to build and maintain a competitive advantage for the county in this area. Specifically, the guidance at that point was that Kershaw County should complete all possible engineering studies and obtain all necessary permits on a one-hundred-acre parcel in the northern portion of the mega site, the section that is most frequently considered by industrial prospects. These studies and those permits, which are good for five years from completion, would be usable by any industrial prospect that landed on the site and would advance the timeline required to build a large facility by many months. In an environment where industries seek to be producing in the shortest amount of time possible, saving up to six months on the process or more would provide us with a significant advantage over anyone that had not already taken those steps. Those are the projects that council approved in 2015. Again, these are all projects that, as I said, in some cases we have completed, other cases are underway, future phases we've not yet started on. The total for the bond was seventeen-point-one million dollars that was issued. What staff is looking, yes, sir?
For the sake of those who are rushing through this, we're in Phase One right now.
Yes, sir.
And we have not gone to Phase Two.
Correct.
And I would say one of the distinguishing characteristics between One and Two, gentlemen and ladies, is completed a spec building, all right? I just wanted to point that out. There is a spec building in Phase Two. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, Vic. Just wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir. There are a total of three spec buildings that were approved in the bond. The next steps that staff would see would be to engineer and permit an industrial slab equaling approximately one hundred acres. It would include the completion of topographical and subsurface geotechnical surveys, preparation of engineering plans for site grading and construction access roadways, and the preparation and submittal of permit applications for the site grading, storm drainage and erosion, and sediment control, permits from DHEC, the Corps of Engineers, and Kershaw County. The actual area in question on the property is the red square that we'd be discussing and talking about doing the permitting for. So that's where we get to tonight, is the discussion of those next steps, of which staff has recommended that we proceed with the engineering and permitting of the necessary work to put us to the point of being able to complete a one-hundred-acre slab if needed.
And to be clear, the reason I'm going to ask in a moment for an executive session is it's not one contract, it's two. One, the contract as relates to the site, and two, which is an option technically. And the second one is a contract to do the engineering services. Just for everybody, my sheet of paper is as granular as the one you have on the screen. Highway 601 is on the extreme right-hand side. I think you all are familiar with that, just for the sake of pointing it out. I think I'm at the ready to go to executive session. And then we can get into the details. Mr. Jones raised a very good point. I think we ought to take that on. But we had to capture these facts and then go to executive session with the caution that we have two contractual matters to guard here that are very central to the success of the next steps. So can I call for an executive session? Yeah, let's do that. Can we have a motion for executive session? And no vote, and with a potential return for a vote, please.
So made.
Mr. Bozard?
Second.
The second. Now, further discussion is I'd like to have Mr. Carpenter and Mr. DeBoz. And if you would, please, Peggy McLean. Does anyone need anybody else, Vic? Is that okay? All right, I think we're ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman, you asked if there were any other comments, and you made a comment and did not extend it to anybody else.
Yeah, I was just waiting. I didn't see one. Go ahead.
I don't have one. I'll save it for when we come out.
Great, that's terrific.
I'm sure you'd be glad to hear that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Let's move to a vote now. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and we are adjourned for an executive session, potentially returned to a vote. Thank you. I need everybody here.
No, no, I just want to come out.
All right, everyone is returned. We have a quorum. Can we have a motion to return from executive session?
Motion to come out of executive session.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. We pick up where we left off with the briefings by Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Tucker, would you like to make a motion?
Do we vote? We need to vote.
Oh, you need to vote. All those in favor of coming out of executive session, so signify. And there you are. We are out of executive session unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Tucker, would you like to lead us off?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of council and our citizens, after having discussion, I would like to make a motion in reference to our mega site. And, Miss Mary, I'll go real slow or give you this. I'd like to make a motion that upon receipt of a signed option extension for the central South Carolina mega site in question, we authorize staff to engage with Alliance Consulting Engineers to accomplish all necessary engineering studies and permitting processes as have been presented to council tonight for the sum not to exceed 1.13 million, with the net county portion not to exceed 800,000. Do I need to repeat?
Very good, I've got it. Mary, how are you doing?
I'm good.
Very good. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bozard. Mr. Tucker, do you want to lead us into discussion?
Yes, sir. What I would first like to start off, because I know the math didn't add up, is that there's about $330,000 potentially that's coming from other agencies like Duke, Fairfield Electric, and the state. So that's the difference in the math. I think this is a needed project to move forward so we can stay in the game with a mega site. And hopefully, if we're continuing to be blessed as we have in this county, that we will land something very meaningful and worthy of our citizens' future employment.
Very good. Other discussions?
Yeah, just one correction. That's not Fairfield, that's the Power Team.
Okay, it's a collaborative.
No, it's Fairfield Electric.
Fairfield Electric.
It is Fairfield Electric.
It is Fairfield Electric.
It's not.
Yeah, he said Fairfield Electric.
It is.
It's the Power Team.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you for the question.
No, sir, that's it.
Others? Other question, Mr. Jones, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. I want to just start where I left off and it all pertains to what we're talking about. I am now and have been in favor of an option for the mega site. On the agenda, it is listed for discussion approval, engineering and permitting for central Carolina mega site. The agenda has no, had no, or didn't have any information whatsoever as to what will be discussed and approved. I was told by the administrator, I met with him five times this past week, that he could and would sign an option for the mega site option and would spend, you know, 1 to 1.2 million dollars on the mega site under the option. The administrator said he intended to sign the option but would not sign it until council had a chance to discuss it. And that was at my request, and I want to thank you, Mr. Carpenter, for that. I don't think the option should be signed until council approves the option. That's the way I felt all along. And I have several problems with this. One, I don't think there was any transparency in the agenda or the agenda packet as to the 1.2 million dollars. And two, for us to be voting on it tonight, I'd be more comfortable if it was in a couple of weeks at the next meeting. No transparency in the agenda as to the option under which the county proposes to spend the 1.2 million dollars was not there as well. So I oppose the spending of the 1.2 million dollars for an option without council's approval and oppose approving 1.2 million dollars to be spent by the county with no notice in the agenda as to the actual proposal. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Seeing there are none, we have the motion before us from Mr. Tucker. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Conell. Those opposed, as Mr. Jones, the motion passes, and we move forward to the next item, which is Council briefs. Mr. Jones, you will lead off.
Mr. Chairman, I have no comment.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Snodgrass?
No report tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
No report.
Mr. Gardner?
No report.
Just one thing, thank you. That Clean Community, as I understood it, and Mr. Chairman, maybe you can help me out, those tarps and so forth that they put out, they put them out at a lot of the boat landing and so forth so the boats could use them, small trailers that people have could use them, and even pickup trucks. That was my understanding. Is that your understanding?
I don't know. We'll have to check on it. Let's ask Mr. Carpenter to follow up, and we'll get back.
It was my understanding that this is what those tarps are going to be for.
Yes, sir, they're intended for pickup trucks and small loads like that, not large.
We was not passing them out to businesses that had big trucks.
Yes, sir.
Now, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Conell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just two things. The Clean Community Commission on March 23rd, 2019, has a road cleanup project, which I'll be participating in. I hope everybody else will get engaged. We need to better enforce our litter laws in Kershaw County. As you travel major thoroughfares and particularly after the grass gets cut, you'll notice a fair amount of litter and debris on the side of the road. So I hope, like the Avet Brothers say, one of my favorite country bluegrass and rock bands, I want to have pride like my mama had, not like the kind in the Bible that turns you bad. I think we need to take a little more pride in our community and beautify it some. And then also, March 9th, 2019, we've got the 10th Annual Cars to Dreams Show at Potter Park in Elgin. The proceeds are going to go to the Shrinells Hospital for Children. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, and I'll finish up real quickly. I'm asking to see if we can get the shipping containers back on the agenda now that we've had our public hearing and we know that all the lawyers are back from Australia and all their bout with disease. And also, I'd ask you also to look out, Miss Mary passed out the application from Mr. Roy Din, the Airport Commission. And I would ask you all to consider that for a vote next time we meet. You also have at your table the goals and objectives. And we now will soon move into the work session to see where the money goes and how we get these accomplished. That's the hard part, and that part begins now. And Mr. Carpenter will begin to schedule work sessions. You also, I need, I'm compelled to tell you, as chairman, whenever I act on your behalf, we had a meeting with all the stakeholders at the CCTCA tech. And as you know, we always like to finish well. We think that job's done, but it's not. There's a lot of roads, landscaping, and so on that needs to be done. And it'll be several months before we finish that project. The good news is we have stakeholders to help us in the city, and we are arm-in-arm with them and CCTC and with the Chamber of Commerce and all other stakeholders to include the school district to finish well at the CCTCA tech complex. So there's a letter in your box to that effect. And with that, I want to close out the way these two gentlemen just did on the Clean Community Commission. What a great example of private-public partnership and how a crying need needs to be met for all the trash that's out there. Let's take pride in our great county. With that, Mr. Carpenter, please.
Just two items, Mr. Chairman, members of council. One, at a luncheon today, the United Way of Kershaw County awarded a gold award to the employees of Kershaw County for their annual giving campaign. And the second, and more of significance and pride to all of us, at the recent annual meeting of the officers for the Clerks to Council of the State of South Carolina, our own Mary Sigler was elected the secretary of the statewide organization. That is my report.
That's all right.
And I'm done.
Ah, Mr. Turner, nothing, Mr. Chairman. Welcome home. With that, we move to a motion to adjourn. Can we, Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bozard. Any discussion? Thank you, gentlemen. We have a great future in front of us with this now inflection point that we now have arrived at on economic development. It was a much-needed change. I thank you all for your attention to that. Let's move now to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary, we are adjourned. Thank you.